Okay, good evening. Like to welcome everyone to our work session. Thank you all for coming out. And I know there are people that will watch this later or maybe watching it live streamed. So if you will please share with friends and neighbors that they can go to our Facebook page or YouTube and, and search this and they can, they can watch it later. I know it's a busy time of year for everyone. Andrew Parker, our city administrator will take over and we're going to go through hearing from some department heads and share on our capital projects. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's always a pleasure for staff to present project reports to the Mayor and Council and the public. And throughout the year, we talk about specific projects all along the way, but we thought it would be good this year to give a comprehensive year in capital projects report. So this evening I'll be speaking. And then we've got Parks and Rec Director Steve Roberts that will be speaking, Chad Townsend, Public Works Director, and Andrew Weir is my Airport Manager. I had Cindy in preparation, our Finance Officer, for this report, just to take a look back at our capital project expenditures from 2023 to current. And staff has been working to execute just over $50 million of capital projects during that period. And the large majority of those were funded via SPOLOST, bond, or other types of projects. And in many cases, we're able to leverage local funds with grant funds. And so I'm also pleased to report that during that period, just 2023 to current, the city's been able to obtain about $8 million in grant funding from state and federal partners. And we'll talk about several of those projects this evening. And we also have another, just over $2 and a half million grant request in submitted right now to the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program for a project that we'll talk about this evening. So without further ado, we'll get, we'll get started. So on the administration side, I wanted just to touch on the John Davis Recreation Center first. It's by far the largest capital project from a spin perspective that's ongoing right now. The project is in construction, as you know. It is a 2020 SPOLOST project. So with all the projects this evening, we'll tell you where, where the funding source comes from for each particular project. So this was a SPOLOST Committee recommended project. The 2020 SPOLOST and the 2024 SPOLOST, as you know, had a citizen appointed committee that was comprised of citizens from Dalton and the other municipalities, as well as Whitfield County. And they heard from the departments all across the city and the county and the various other municipalities with their project recommendations. And they helped us fine tune those and, and they made a recommendation after several months of work. So this was one of the projects from the 2020 SPOLOST. We're really excited about this project because it's a complete transformation of the historic John Davis Recreation Center. As you might recall, portions of that building were built in the 50s and 60s as well as the 80s. The 50s and 60s structures were demolished as part of this project, but the 80s portion of the building, which you see there in the photo in the top left corner, was retained for the administrative offices of the Recreation Center. The project will feature a new gymnasium with seating for over 370. And then, and as we might recall, the old gym had some pretty major issues with lack of air conditioning and one of the walls had some major challenges, structural challenges. So we're really excited to get a new, full basketball gym in place here. And also the, the building has a ton of versatility. I'm going to show you a few photos of the progress of the various meeting rooms and things that this facility will be able to accommodate. But we really see this as kind of a Matt Gaston Community Center on the north end of town. So we're really excited about the potential that this project brings. We will, we do have a new pool access building. The project is about 70% complete. And the expected completion date is March of 2026. As we've talked throughout the year, we've had a lot of setbacks with the project. Anytime that you're trying to build a new facility that fit literally attaches to a structure from the 1980s, we experienced several issues along the way, both in design and during construction that we've had to adjust the plan as we've gone on. We've got a great architect and a great contractor who are both here with us tonight. So I thank them for coming. And we, we're really excited about this project wrapping up in March. Here are some photos of the progress. Since it's an ongoing construction zone, the public doesn't unfortunately get a chance to see these detailed photos. And a rec commission had a chance to visit the site at their last monthly meeting. So in the top left photo, you will see this is one of the second story meeting rooms that was designed to be divided into one large room or three small rooms or a combination thereof. That, that particular room has a lot of versatility. It's directly adjacent to an art room, a room that was designed for art lessons and classes and programs that the rec department can do and also partner with folks in the community to provide those art lessons. The other room that you may recall in the 1980s building that's being renovated, a lot of the civic clubs used to meet in the pool hillside room. And that, that room is being completely restored. And you see a photo there in the bottom left. One of the great design attributes about this structure is when you walk into the front doors of the new portion of the building, there's a large atrium. And it provides access to all the key functions of the building, one of which is the voting precinct. The, one of the downstairs meeting rooms has historically been used as a voting precinct. And we, we hope that it will continue to be used for that in the future. But this connects to the gym, the meeting rooms, as well as you can take an exterior sidewalk out to the pool access building and access the pool that way. You see the basketball gym. It's currently being painted and the work is undergoing there. Now that the building is in the dry, it's not exposed to the elements. So all the interior finish work will begin what hasn't started already. One of the really exciting features of this project that was kind of a value add is we were able to incorporate a climbing wall, something that Dalton really doesn't have in its public Parks and Rec. This has a belay system that up to three folks can go on there and climb up the wall. And there's different levels of difficulty. And our staff will have, have to be certified to operate that. So it's a really exciting feature. It'll have a, a safety area down below it that's cushioned. And so we're really excited about adding that as an amenity to the community. And then here are a couple of photos of the pool access building. As you might recall, all the pool access previously was through the older portion of the building, the locker rooms, et cetera. This building is the turnkey building to provide access to the pool with locker rooms, restrooms, showers. And actually, the men and women's restroom has actually been used some in the late part of the summer already. And it is, it's virtually complete now. There's some interior, interior finish work that's taking place. And then there's some exterior site work that has to be wrapped up. But that building is essentially complete at this point. The other project that I will talk about, and then I'll turn it over for, for the other department project updates. One of the most exciting projects we've had in a long, long time is the completion of the mill line, which as you know, runs from the Paul Belk Honorary Trailhead to Hagmill Lake Park. That project was completed. And we're working on the extension of that. This was the extension phase two was a 2024 SPOLOST project. And the 2024 SPOLOST, you're going to hear that come up several times this evening. What's important to remember is that was what was considered a Pago SPOLOST. So none of the projects were bonded upfront. The, the projects will be completed as collections come in for both the city and the county. And so we've, we're right at one year of collections. The collections, I believe, started in October of 2024. So this October marked one year. The, the collections have been coming in. So what we're trying to do is any projects that require design, we're trying to get the design completed so that we're ready to start construction about at the end of, you know, year two, so that we can get these projects delivered much more quickly and efficiently. And so this project did require design and the design has been underway for several months now with a local engineering consultant, Consor. And the scope is to extend the mill line from the Paul Belk Honorary Trailhead down to Burr Park. The trail extension will be about two miles of new trail. And then we will have own street, share the path, share the road type accommodations once we actually get into downtown. So from kind of the Five Points intersection at Hawthorne Street and Hamilton Street, from there into Burr Park, we're going to try to get folks onto Depot Street and some of the lesser travel streets to give them a safe path down to Burr Park with the goal of, you know, eventually completing this. I hope one day it goes all the way to the south end of the city. And we have this interconnected spine trail that all residents of the city will have access to. And you may recall, this was one of the projects that was widely supported by the Young Game Changers Group that came into town from the GMA's Young Game Changers Initiative. They actually gave the project its, its name and, and cited that these type of improvements in other cities have generated a lot of economic activity, revitalization in neighborhoods and things like that. And we're certainly hopeful that the continued extension of the trail will provide that for Dalton. The plans are scheduled to be complete by Consor in April of 2026. And we expect to go to Project Letting. That's where we put the bid package out for contractors to provide competitive bids on in May of 2026. And then we will have construction hopefully starting in late summer of 2026. And you may ask, well, why does a simple trail take that long to design? There are a number of environmental considerations with US Army Corps of Engineers with designated wetlands. You may recall a recent council meeting where I had to ask for funding to, for further rerouting of the trail because the environmentalist had identified some wetlands that were, the trail was in conflict with. We also have to work with Georgia EPD on buffer variances and things of that nature. And so that coordination with our state and federal partners will be ongoing from February to June. We also have to build this project in a way to minimize right of way impacts the best we can. And so the designers are working closely with the land surveyor to identify any potential constraints where we may or may not have to acquire easement or right of way, but we're working to avoid that as much as we can. So the, the drawing there depicts the trail and I'm going to show some close up shots. The trail layout was actually informed by our Mill Line Stakeholders Committee, a group of local cyclists and trail enthusiasts that met for several months and helped us identify. We looked at about eight different alternatives. And this was the alternative that garnered the most support with the, the citizen stakeholder committee. So the trail will actually start, pick up at the Paul Belk Honorary Trailhead and actually go across Chattanooga Avenue. And instead of actually routing just directly south on Chattanooga Avenue, the stakeholders committee wanted to give as much greenway trails as we can. So we're running across some city owned land at the corner of Chattanooga Avenue and Cornet Drive. And they wanted to actually make more utilization for Mount Rachel Park, which has been a legacy park for a little over 10 years now, and actually route the trail through Mount Rachel Park. So the trail will actually cross Cornet Drive on the north end of Mount Rachel and actually enter the city's property on Mount Rachel and actually be through, throughout the park. And you see the gentle changes in, in curvature. That is to address some of the elevation challenges on the project. So this will be very similar. If you've used the mill line, it will be a 10 foot ADA compliant path all the way through Mount Rachel. It will run down through the trailhead, make use of the existing accommodations on Rachel Street. There's already sidewalk and a bike lane. And that will connect you to the greenway that the city constructed eight to 10 years ago on the old railroad spur track. And then it will take you back out to Chattanooga Avenue where it will be an on-street greenway from the railroad spur all the way down to Five Points. So this is really where some of the challenges with right of way have come in and they're having to really work through and retaining walls and things. But again, that's about two miles. And then we'll get back on the street at Hamilton Street and use the on-street facilities until we get to Burr Park. One final project update. The police department, as you know, had a property and evidence building expansion from the 2020 SPOLOST. As you know, in many cases, evidence is required to be stored in perpetuity for certain types of crimes. And so we were running out of room at the existing P and E storage at the police department, Police Services Center. And the project scope, as you see, was an addition to the building that features 7,200 square feet, 3,000 evidence storage bays, a new evidence processing lab, and a new vehicular bay with lighting to evaluate vehicles involved in crimes as well as crashes and things of that nature. The project's been complete since late summer, but there is one missing piece of HVAC equipment on the project, a direct outside of air component, which is a code requirement now. So the police department's been able to use the building now for several months, but we can't call it 100% complete until that final HVAC component comes in. And here are some really neat photos of the building, both the groundbreaking. You see it went from a, just a grassy area and an impound lot to a new building that's very functional, versatile. And the most critical thing is our employees now have a very safe building to be able to process evidence, store and sometimes very dangerous evidence, depending on if it's drugs and things like that, with the proper ventilation and accountability that we have to provide storing these types of items. And I will say that many cities and counties have called Dalton to, because they're in a similar need and they've reached out to, to better understand how we approached it and to get some good takeaways for their various projects. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Parks and Rec Director Steve Roberts to give us some updates in our quality of life area.
Good evening. These are one of those special times where you get to really kind of expand on, on where we are with things. And it's such a wonderful time to be a part of Dalton. My first one we're looking at is the pickleball complex. We are in construction of that. Our project scope for that was 15 lighted pickleball courts. Three of those are undercover. We do have a new building that has restrooms and a concession office and a, and seated covered seating that I have picnic tables and that kind of thing. We're approximately around 80% done with that. The expectation completion date is December the 20th, except for the acrylic finish on the courts. And mother nature just has not been cooperating. We've had a lot of rain that kind of ran us back. We had about, we've had, from the start of November, we had 15 inches of rain up till November. And then obviously November's been a pretty wet month in its own right. So we are running about a month behind on this project. But the problem with that is once we have to go to doing the acrylic finish on the courts, we have to have so many days of weather that is above 40 and rising. So probably we're looking at everything being done on that except for the acrylic finish on the courts. And we will be the first thing that they do in the spring. I don't want to push that and have a bad finish because that finish is our base layer for the rest of time. And we can see down at some of our tennis courts where that acrylic finish is not really good. And we have a lot of problems with just being able to have drainage and cracks showing up in that, in that surface. So it will be in spring, but we are going to have it, the, the nets and everything will be up, the lines will be down, it will be playable. It just wouldn't be what I would consider our finished courts. So and then my next one will be Al Rollins Park. We have finished up design on this and we're actually looking to put this out to bid this month. And we hope to have that back in the middle of, time, time period we're looking at is in the middle of January, to hopefully bid by the end of January. So we would start work down there. At this point in time, we will be looking at probably not having anything down there. I think we will have enough room at Heritage Point to be able to, to get through this season with our baseball and softball up there. But I don't want to run this back and then run into weather and everything. I'd rather just go ahead and make sure that we get it done. But that scope, we'll be looking at regrading all the baseball fields. We'll be installing new drainage that will, with a warning track around every field that will catch any water coming onto our playing surfaces. And then we'll also have drainage throughout it to pull that drainage and get it back out. The number one problem that we have there is there's so much water that gets on those fields. And if it rains, it becomes unplayable. And, and about an hour of rain, you're, you're done for the day. So hopefully if we get the right drainage, most of the water will be caught before it ever gets on the fields. And then what does, we will have drainage. And the good thing is, is we have fought to try to keep these grass fields. You know, this is our local Little League Park. And there's a big difference between that and say Heritage Point. Heritage Point is our tournament park. It gets that play every weekend. It gets hammered. We won't, I, I really fought hard to try to keep this our grass. And so that at the end of the day, the special memories that, that park has had for so many years will be there, but yet it's just going to be an upgrade that will make those the best dirt and grass fields in Northwest Georgia, which to me, I, I got a feeling that there's going to be a lot of people wanting to come back to grass. Turf is great when it rains, but that's about the only time it's great. It's hot every other time. So, but we also are looking at a new building. And you can see that in that bottom right hand corner. It will be a new building with ADA restrooms. Our restrooms in that building are not ADA compliant. So we looked at trying to renovate the bathrooms that we do have in there. There's just not enough space. So we will be looking to add four new restrooms down there, all four of those being ADA compliant. And then also we're looking at renovating the existing restrooms and updating everything inside the building that is currently there, but not trying to make those ADA, obviously. And then also looking to build the batting cages, kind of like what you see in that top picture, which will hopefully be covered and, and have access to those because we do start baseball in February when it's still needing some cover for your, and, and being able to get them out and get them hitting in some situations. But we're about 80% done with the design completion. And like I said, we will try to get that out for bid at the first of December. So our first few days of December. And then, let's see, my next one is Heritage Point Park improvements. This one we'll be looking at, we have, our funding source for this will be the 2024 SPOLOST, but we have applied for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant. And we would, we applied for that in October of 25. This project scope would be to renovate Heritage Point Park, build connecting trails with pedestrian bridges from the soccer complex up to the softball complex, building a restroom at the playground area. We have a porta toilet there now and that is probably one of our most used playgrounds at this point. So we really wanted to get at least a single ADA family style bathroom with a changing table in there. We will have an outdoor classroom pavilion at the soccer complex. We already have the pad there, but this will allow us to go ahead and get all that done. River access point with about 20 parking spots. Renovate the existing restrooms in the buildings. And then we would be looking at the road, a road and bridge from the softball complex up to this, to the soccer complex, up to the softball complex. And that honestly, with the numbers that we've been looking at, I mean, I think that's going to be a little bit more dependent on whether we get that Georgia Outdoor Stewardship. That is what majority of that money is going to be looking at. And then we also are looking at shade structures for the softball pods and building some batting cages up there and then replace those lights with LED fixtures. That park has been a great park. And obviously as much use as we get out of that, those LED lights would help save money in the long run, but it's also just needed. Those, those lights are almost 22 years old. So so our expected completion dates with the GOSP timeline, spring we would be, will know if we had a successful pre-application. And if we get through that, then in spring of 2026, second level application period opens and then in May, we would find out, it would close. And I'm sorry, in May of 2026, we would see if we would get final approval and if ours passed. So hopefully by the summer, we'll know exactly where we're kind of going with some of the other parts of that project. But, but we are looking at what we can get done right now. So and then I just wanted to kind of give you the completion update. I think most people knew or know that we finished the Heritage Point Field renovations and where we turfed all the infield's on all 10 fields up there. That is 100% when we started playing in March on those fields and have got nothing but rave reviews. The only tournament we had actually get rained out this year was the second tournament we had up there. And it was just because we were trying to protect the grass from where it was just newly constructed, but not the turf. The turf has been great and we hadn't had to cancel anything. So it was been a very uninterrupted summer of baseball and softball up there. And I think they more than paid for themselves. So any questions?
Tell, tell us where we are on the, the harder surface on the track, the walking trail around the Hagmill Lake.
Thank you, Councilmember Farrow. Actually meant to touch on that in the mill line extension. So that, as you know, we are providing a paved trail around Hagmill Lake. Some sections of it will be constructed where the existing trail is. And then some sections will actually be new. So users that prefer the more nature trail can continue to use the nature trail some that would need an ADA type accommodation, you know, a mother pushing a stroller, father pushing a stroller, those type things, they will be able to use the paved path. It's about a little over three miles around the lake. We're actually completing that project in-house through Public Works. And they actually started the project very recently, actually started some timber And they actually started the project very recently, actually started some timber clearing to be able to get the paving equipment in. And so when Chad comes up, I'll ask him, he's actually coming up next to, to give even a further update on that. I think we're, yeah, he's next.
Is that why part of it was closed over the weekend?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Good evening. So yeah, to provide a further update on that, we really got started on that project last week, installing all the necessary erosion control items. And then start this week on doing the clearing. So we're, we're finally well underway on that one. So. All right, I'll start with the Penson Kyler Streetscape Improvements Project. The Penson Kyler Streetscape Project originated from a twenty-year-old master plan that was revisited as part of the City Admin Capital Improvements Project a few years ago. Construction commenced in May of twenty twenty-four and was recently completed in August of this year. The Public Works Department was awarded a two million dollar grant through the Improving Neighborhood Outcomes Grant. And the remaining six point eight million dollars was funded through the general fund. The project aimed to complete the twenty-year-old master plan, address storm drain issues, relocate unsightly aerial utilities underground and update sidewalk and curb and gutter elements to provide an ADA compliant corridor that would match the remainder of downtown. Here's some pictures kind of showing the improved elements with the angle parking, then the bump outs at the intersection, providing pedestrian refuse prior to the crossings, whatnot that were recently installed. Next is the Walnut North Drainage Improvements Project. This project stemmed from multiple reports of structural flooding and property degradation downstream from the West Hill Cemetery. The project consisted of the installation of regenerative stormwater system, detention pond, roughly twenty-five hundred linear feet of stormwater bypass pipe, six hundred linear feet of pipelining and a stream bank stabilization project to provide approximately twenty-four parcels of flood reduction downstream. All four phases of the project were funded out of bonded capital. Three of the four phases were completed between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. And the fourth phase slated to be completed this month, hopefully next week, weather pending. This project was unique in the fact that we installed possibly one of the first regenerative stormwater conveyance systems in the state. And we received a Georgia APWA Project of the Year Award in the category of Small Cities and Rural Communities Environmental Category. So some pictures on that, starting to the left, you can see the regenerative stormwater conveyance system that was installed throughout West Hill Cemetery. The next two photos are of the Ridge Street Bypass Project. This is where we laid roughly twelve hundred feet of pipe relocating water from the backyards of residences into city right of way, discharging it just above Franklin Street. And then the next slide shows where we pick up the water at Franklin Street and then take it down to Valley Drive where it is discharged into a ditch off Valley Drive there near Walnut Avenue. I'm sure some of you guys have seen where the string bank stabilization was performed along Walden Avenue, and that's the picture in the bottom right. Next is Prater Alley Detention Pond. Prater Alley Pond was constructed to provide flood, flood reduction for downstream properties. As you can see, the project consisted of the installation of a regional detention pond, which actually sits right next door to, to City Hall here. The project was completed in September of last year and total cost of construction was around one point two million dollars and was funded out of twenty fifteen SPOLOST and bonded capital. Our pipelining program, we kicked off our trenchless pipelining program as part of the Walnut North Project that I had mentioned earlier. In late twenty twenty-two, we've completed a total of three projects since. The trenchless method in which we elect to perform the pipe rehabilitation provides minimally intrusive repair and also expedites the repair process minimizing impacts to traffic flow as well as, as well as traffic safety. As stated, we've completed three projects to date, the latest being the Level One A pipelining Project, which was completed in July of this year. It included a total of three thousand one hundred and forty-five linear feet of pipe ranging from fifteen inch to a hundred and twelve inches in diameter and came at a cost of one million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was funded out of bonded capital. The Level One A project aimed at repairing outdated or failing infrastructure under roads that if failed would cause a major concern for emergency response or vehicle or traffic. These roads primarily being one-way-in or one-way-out streets. The Temple Bethel Stormwater Detention Facility and Memorial Park. So the Temple Bethel Project came to fruition after the Temple stakeholders wished to donate the property to the city aligned with the Walnut North Drainage Study that was produced by Arcatus, which is a engineering firm which we've retained, retained to do all of our stormwater analysis. They showed the area that Temple Site was located as a potential location for meaningful stormwater detention location. The project will not only bring flood reduction downstream, but will also be the home to a newly constructed memorial park commemorating the Jewish community. The park will be inclusive of architectural elements that were recovered from the temple prior to demolition. The project budget is approximately one point five million and will be funded out of bonded capital. Public Works completed the demo in-house in July of this year. And we just recently received proposals for the construction of the project. We anticipate the construction of the project to begin in February of twenty twenty-six. Here's a, a picture of the rendering of the proposed memorial park. This would be if you were standing on Valley Drive, looking into the side of the temple. At first you'll enter the kind of memorial plaza. You see several elements there that were, used to be on the face of the temple. The Star David being in the center, Ten Commandments on your right, the Temple Bethel lettering also on the right that we pulled off the face and then the viewing plaza that's going to overlook the detention facility. We did the best we could to kind of reflect the entrance that used to be there to the temple as well as the menorahs that we pulled off the front will reinstall to try and mirror that image best possible. Glenwood Avenue Stormwater Improvements. This project originated from issues with roadway flooding along Glenwood Avenue and structural flooding resulting in negative economic impacts to local businesses. The project is expected to cost approximately one point eight million dollars and will be funded out of the twenty fifteen and twenty twenty SPOLOST. We are currently at ninety percent complete on design and we are expected to let the project in early spring of twenty twenty-six. The North, North Thornton Sidewalk Improvements, the North Thornton Corridor experiences a lot of heavy foot traffic as you can see in the pictures there. Given the lack of sidewalk, curb and gutter pedestrian safety concerns arise obviously in this area. The, the project consists of installing new sidewalk and curb for approximately thirty-three hundred linear feet beginning at North Thornton and Tyler Street intersection. And we'll go north terminating at the intersection of Bryan Street and Thornton Avenue where we have existing sidewalk. We expect the project cost to be one point seven five million and will be funded out of the twenty twenty-four SPOLOST. The design is currently ninety percent complete and is currently being reviewed by CSX. I don't have a, a good timeframe in which we expect to let the project given CSX, but hopefully that'll be early next year as well. East Morse Corridor Improvements, very similar to the issues we have on North Thornton. The East Morse Corridor improvements stem from the result of Public Works staff witnessing a lot of pedestrian foot traffic through the corridor. Public Works received multiple requests for pedestrian traffic upgrades. And then of course, the commercial growth that the corridor has experienced over the last several years. The Public Works Department was recently awarded a two million dollar grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission that will further expand on the two million dollars that was allocated from the twenty twenty-four SPOLOST Fund. We'll first look to retain an engineer to do a master plan of the entire corridor stemming from Glenwood Avenue out to Walnut Avenue. If y'all recall, two years ago, we've already done a small section near Glenwood. So we'll look to do something similar from where we left off there, all the way out to Walnut Avenue. But we'll retain an engineer to design the master plan. And then they will in turn, turn around and design a phase plan to get the actual construction within the budgetary constraints of the project. So we're expected to be fully funded with the grant by the end of this year. From there, we'll retain the engineer, undergo design and then hire a contractor. We expect construction to start late twenty twenty-seven and then be completed by late twenty twenty-eight. In our annual asphalt resurfacing program, the twenty twenty-five asphalt resurfacing project is currently underway and we're roughly twenty percent complete to date. This year's total contract is one million six hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars funded out of the twenty twenty-four SPOLOST, the GDOT Local Maintenance and Improvements Grant, the GDOT Local Roads Assistance Grant and the Whitfield County Service Delivery Transfer. Under this year's contract, we are expected to pave approximately two point six three center line, center line miles of road. The past three years, we have paved a total of seventeen point five eight center line miles at a total cost of seven million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. The twenty twenty-four SPOLOST funds, GDOT grants and the Whitfield County Service Delivery Transfer provides roughly two point two million dollars per year for an annual paving budget through fiscal year of twenty twenty-eight. Underwood Street Bridge Replacement, following a twenty twenty-two GDOT Bridge Evaluation, we discussed with Pont Engineering our best option to address the repairs needed to Underwood Street Bridge at Mill Creek. Following the discussions with the engineer, we deemed it most beneficial to do a full bridge replacement. The repairs that were recommended were expected to cost somewhere between one point four million and one point eight million and only yield a ten-year lifespan at best. The budget we got for the full bridge replacement is three point eight million to four million and with a fifty-year return on that. So from a cost benefit, it made sense to do full bridge replacement. The four million dollars for the bridge replacement will be funded out of the twenty twenty-four SPOLOST account. And we are expecting a bid letting in spring twenty twenty-six.
Chad, can you go back to the pipelining?
Yes.
I just want to make mention that what it take, what this technology allows for with the relining of the pipes is that there's not the disturbance in opening up of pulling out old pipe. And the, the cost savings is tremendous, but also the time requirement is minimal compared to what it would be to traditionally open up and.
Right. The majority of the pipe crossings we can do, well, we don't, we contracted out. I wish we had the technology and experience to do it, but they can do sometimes two to three crossings a day, but for sure, one crossing a day. We don't have to close roads down. It's a lot safer, a lot quicker, in that nature. So.
And Madam Mayor, to your point, you may recall back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we had a, a culvert that failed on Rocky Face Circle. And that road had to be closed for three, about three weeks. We had to contract with a contractor under an emergency basis and the cost was really substantial. And that's one reason why we wanted to include the pipelining program in this, a project update because this technology, which is relatively new, you know, creates a new solution for us to avoid situations like that. Not only is the cost much less than an open cut repair. You also, to Chad's point, don't have to cut open the road and, and the residents or businesses, whatever, wherever the pipe culvert is at has to be impacted for three, four weeks at a time, you know, when you're not expecting it after a storm or something like that. So that's a real tangible example of had this technology been available at that time and implemented, that could have definitely been prevented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about three projects. We've got two of them are ongoing and the third will be starting in the spring. So our first one is the Hangar Development Project. It's currently in construction. The cost was four and a half million with a one point one million dollar local match. The funding source was a seventy-five twenty-five state local grant. The project's scope was three hangar buildings, one eighty-six by one twenty, one sixty-two by sixty and a ten bay T-hanger. This included design as well, roughly twenty-seven thousand square feet of additional hangar space at the airport. The completion percentage is approximately ninety-five percent done. Substantial completion date is December the fifteenth. This is our T-hanger site. Up there in the top left, you can see the original site just after clearing off top soil. And then at the bottom left, you've got the interior of one of the hangar bays. So this building has ten hangar bays in it. We essentially have a, a power, water left to run. And then site work, obviously we've got to pour concrete in the front there and pave around both the front and back. But we should have this substantially completed by the fifteenth. This is the eighty-six by one twenty site. Top left there, you can see the original site. That's looking north and then the interiors on the bottom left there, we essentially have interior paint. We have to finish up power, running power this week. And then the exterior site work is essentially finished. Just have to run a water line around the back. And then on the third site, this is the sixty-two by sixty hangar. We've got the original site there at the top left. Interior is almost complete. We're finishing up paint today, actually. We are doing the floor in the bathroom tomorrow and then we have final inspection on Wednesday. And the tenant will be moving in on Wednesday afternoon. This hangar will actually be occupied by the Georgia Forest Street Commission. So they will have some firefighting aircraft based at Dalton going forward. So we're excited about that.
Andrew, before we move to the next project, could you just speak briefly to why these projects are important, both from the operating budget of the airport, but also from the local economy perspective?
Sure. So these hangars will bring in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional revenue for the airport, which is obviously very good for the operating budget of the airport. So we can remain in the black and, and not be using tax dollars to actually run the operations of the airport. And then additionally, you've got fuel sales that will occur and you've got a lot of adware and tax revenue. So each one of these aircraft will be paying adware and tax both to the county and the city. We will roughly be doubling our hangar capacity of what we currently have. So it's going to be a lot of added adware and tax as well. So the economic impact is, is very significant and we have not built hangars at the airports since two thousand and seven. So this is very significant for the airport. Hangar revenue is very stable. So when you have times of economic uncertainty, people may stop flying as much. So you may, your fuel sales may go down. But they still need to house their aircraft in, in hangars. So that keeps your stable revenue coming in, which keeps the airport operational all the time.
Thank you.
On the taxiway rehab project, it's currently under construction. The cost of this was one point seven million with a four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar local match. This was also a seventy-five twenty-five state local grant. The project's scope was a crack repair and a two-inch overlay of the taxiways to include fillets on the one, four and three, two ends, which is just widening of the taxiways. And then construction of a new taxiway connector at Taxiway Charlie, which is about midfield. This is about seventy-five percent complete and. Uh, this is about 75% complete, and we expect to be done by the 28th of December. Up the top, uh, left, we've got the taxiway connector, the new taxiway connector. This is just, uh, the, uh, 19-millimeter base course that you see there. Um, this was mandated by the FAA. We had, actually had to move one of our existing taxiway connectors, uh, to the north so that it did not, uh, join directly to the runway. Um, a new regulation by the FAA. Uh, then on the, uh, right side of the screen, you've got the 1-4 end fillets. So you can see how we've widened the taxiway, uh, at the curve there. That really helps with, uh, larger aircraft when they're making the final turn, uh, out onto the runway. We've had a few, uh, very large aircraft that have actually gotten the main gear off into the, into the grass, and it causes a lot of problems, uh, so that's gonna help with that. Uh, and then at the bottom, in the middle there, you see the crack repairs. We have about, uh, 40 to 45 of those repairs. Those were basically cracks in the existing asphalt that were greater than one inch. And, uh, so we actually could not fix those with crack seal. We had to, uh, cut out, uh, four-foot sections on those and then dig down into the subgrade as needed and repair those, and then, uh, put asphalt back up to existing surface. Uh, so we, we basically have the fillets on the 3-2 end left to pave, and then about five of the, uh, cracks, uh, left to repair, and then it's just the two-inch overlay that will be remaining. So we hope to, uh, be able to finish that by Christmas. Lastly, we've got the lighting electrical rehab project. This was, uh, awarded back in May to TCA Electrical Contractors. Uh, the price is 1.2 million dollars. This is a federal grant, so our local match was only 5% at $63,609. Uh, the project's scope was to rehab the airfield electrical, so that's, uh, replacing, removing and replacing all the existing runway and taxiway lights, uh, the PAPs, uh, which are approach lighting system, and, uh, the wind cone, segmented circle, and replace our, uh, airport beacon. Um, this project has not, uh, been started yet. It will start, uh, right now, estimated for March of 2026. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, I guess, does that, does that conclude you, Andrew, does that conclude your presentation?
I'm sorry, what?
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I realize that we made a lot of maximum use of federal monies, state monies, SPOLOST money, and, and of course, the staff is to be commended for a lot of, of, of the grants that we obtained to do that. But in addition to that, a lot of it was funded by bond that, you know, we fund out of our regular budget. So when you think of the fact that we, in addition to operating the city and, and, you know, paying this bond back that we got several years ago, we, we managed to do all that, and then when I got my tax bill this last week, out of, you know, several thousand-dollar tax bill, our portion of the taxpayers' part that they're paying for the city was a fifth of what they're paying for their school taxes. It was a few hundred dollars, and I paid several thousand dollars for my school taxes, and it was even smaller than what we're paying the county for our taxes when we, when we have our own fire, police, recreation, and we're still paying the county on our tax bill more than we're paying the city. I, I think our staff really needs to be commended for making all that happen, and I, I, I really appreciate it on behalf of the council, but also on behalf of taxpayers.
Well said. I think we, we all agree and appreciate a very talented team that, that we have. Um, want to mention, Andrew, it's not a question, so you're, you're good, it's just a, a statement. Um, we start, if you were, in, in reading our paper, you would have noticed some pretty significant, um, contributions we've made financially to the airport, but these are not projects that come up every year. These are 20- and 30-year maintenance issues. These are all related to safety, and then the revenue opportunities to, to build more hangar spaces certainly, um, has had a very satisfactory, um, argument for the economics of how it makes sense. But we were very fortunate to, to have these federal and state match opportunities, and to our state-elected representatives, we, we've certainly, they have, um, advocated for us to have these opportunities as well. But these are things that don't come, um, every, um, every year. So they're, they're good investments, and they're long-term investments, so, um, same, we've, we've done, we've been busy. So just to recap, Andrew, since 2023, $50 million in capital projects?
That's from all sources, yes, Madam Mayor, including what we didn't talk about this evening was our internal capital improvements program to replace vehicles and things like that, replace roofs on buildings, new HVAC, um, that's, uh, been the spend since 2023.
That's, we're very fortunate that none of those times were taxes increased. So again, that's, um, hugely successful. It's been our, um, our hope that people would be able to come this evening and, and see what our, um, team has been up to. Um, and we have, I, I think we've, we're done a wild, we've been wildly successful in, in delivering on these projects. Um, and I think the question for us to now contemplate is what's next? And we're, we've gotten caught up on so many things, so much, um, of, uh, maintenance needs, and, um, we've, we, we've just had a lot of, of projects come to fruition now that we can look ahead at what's next. If people from the public do have questions, we are coming up on, um, 6 o'clock, and we'll start our regular meeting. But if anyone has a specific question, you, you're welcome to stand up and ask, and whichever department head or Andrew Parker can respond. Um, you're welcome to do that now if anyone has any questions. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Sellers. Ms. Sellers, would you mind to go to the microphone just so it's captured for, would you mind? Thank you so much.
This might seem minimal to a lot of people, but it's not to me. The North Thornton Corridor is one of the loveliest areas coming into town because of the trees. And I certainly hope that sidewalk area will maintain that tree cover. It almost covers the road, and it's the only place left in Dalton where we have trees that meet at the top. That's all I needed to say.
Thank, thank you for, for that comment.
Mr. Parker's tired of hearing me say that, so I hope he hears it every time I say it.
We're very attuned to that, and we're working in the design to totally try to minimize any disturbance to those trees. We're, we're very aware of that. Thank you.
If no one else has any questions or comments, um, this is something that we would like to start doing periodically to, to have the, the public come and, and, and see what projects we're working on, and we certainly want to engage the public in what we will work on next. And the first of the year, we'll be talking about putting those, uh, work sessions together. We've got a group of youngsters out front, um, that I think are, I hope you'll stay for our meeting that we're gonna get to recognize, um, that are soccer champs, and we're very excited about that. So we will take a brief, um, break, and then we will start our council meeting. Thank you, guys.